Good evening, let's get started. The time is three past four. In attendance are Director Jorgensen, Director Law, Director Kiffling, Director Carey, Director Lawson, Director Bangus, and Director Mapak. All seven open numbers are in attendance. Also joining us is, guys, we're getting started. We're getting started, so. Yeah, it's recording. Also in attendance are Superintendent Goll and we also have Dr. Comfort joining us and several of his administrative team are here for support too. So thank you all for joining us here and the first item on the agenda is the budget overview for this upcoming year. I think we are also going to look at enrollment from that perspective of the enrollment, but I'll turn it over to Superintendent Goll first to set up the topic and he will move it to Dr. Comfort, I think. Superintendent Goll.
Good evening Board, staff and members of our community and anyone listening. We are excited tonight to start the very transparent public conversation of how is it that we get and use the money that we have as a district? And so, Dr. Comfort, in his first year has moved this process along expediently and with great transparency to show folks what the opportunity can be. We are excited about this year's budget, but we have a couple of large items that need to be addressed. This is the last year of ESSR funding and this is the last year that District 11 will be coming off of its largest loss from decreasing enrollment averaging. The great news is that we believe that we have the ability to absorb the correct number of those ESSR positions to continue us on the strategic path to deliver on the priorities the Board's put forward and we added fifteen students this year, which means that as we start going forward, we'll be being paid for the number of students we have, not for being paid for the number of students we used to have. That singular initiative, and thank you to the Board and the community for supporting those efforts last year, will put us on a vector towards sustainability over the long term, that we no longer have to be thinking of this by death of a thousand cuts, but how do we invest in the classroom to ensure that our students succeed? That's our bumper sticker. The number one way to student achievement is access to high-quality instruction that begins and ends in the classroom. So I turn that over to Dr. Comfort.
Thanks Superintendent Goll. Thanks Board for the opportunity to start to get the budget in front of you guys. Superintendent Goll did a great job of kind of framing where we are. Obviously, as we build our budget, we want to challenge ourselves to be as school-focused as possible and I think you'll see that in some of our conversations tonight. Before we get started, obviously, the number one driver of our budget is our enrollment, right? The money that we get from the state matters and we talk about that a lot, but the most control we have over our budget is with our enrollment. And so, you'll see up here, we're going to talk a little bit about some enrollment assumptions and kind of where our enrollment is. And so Superintendent Goll just alluded to where our enrollment was this year in comparison to last year, so this is the total count. This is what we would consider a head count. CDE calls that the pupil membership and this is where we added fifteen kids. That was a big celebration for us. We also found that we were really, really tight between our actual October count and then all of the filtering and sorting that happened over the next couple of months with our certified count. If you remember our October count, we showed about a plus eighty kids, so to be within sixty students is really remarkable and so a lot of gratitude to the enrollment team and schools for being really tight on that process. You'll also see over there on the right some enrollment breakdown and then the assumption. So this year's enrollment, you'll see traditional had over twenty-one thousand kids and then you'll see the current charter makeup. That includes the addition this year of James Irwin. Now, that traditional number is, I was gonna, I had a lot of qualifiers in there because traditional includes online, it includes ascent, it includes all of these other things, which is why when anybody ever asks for the enrollment count, it can be one of a variety of numbers. But when we look at our total count, that's how the breakdown was this year and as we're projecting into next year, we are assuming that our traditional enrollment is going to be very stable, i.e. it will be the same. So we're not projecting any decrease in our traditional enrollment and that will be a very big win for the district. Obviously, we are coming out of significant years of declining enrollment and while we've flattened that curve over time, a traditional enrollment of zero or plus would be a really incredible thing for us and that's what we're projecting. You'll also see an increase of charter allocation of one thousand one hundred and fifty kids. And so, the way we got to that number is Thomas McLaren is projecting they have a thousand kids for next year and then if Orton continues to come onboard, they're projecting one hundred and fifty kids. And so, that's where that increase in the charter number comes. So what that means is we will be out of declining enrollment averaging next year, right? That will largely be because of the increase in charter and because we're projecting that we're not going to continue to lose traditional students. So we will be out of declining enrollment averaging, which is a great thing and it's going to serve as a challenge for us in this one year as we transition. Yes, sir.
Quick clarifying question, just because I know that, you know, changes in the rate of change are just as important as the raw numbers. So can you just refresh my memory as to, in say, the previous three years, what has our normal kind of delta been year to year in our function?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great question. So.
And I know some of that is due to COVID.
That's, yeah, absolutely. So I'm going to say pre-COVID and then during COVID and then post-COVID, right? Pre-COVID, we were having a six to seven hundred kid loss on average a year in our traditional enrollment. In COVID, and then it sharpened a little bit right before COVID, right? That slope of the line got a little steeper. In COVID, it was an all-out fall off the cliff, right? We lost thousands of kids in a matter of eighteen months. And then, as we got out of COVID, we kind of fell back into that six hundred kid loss again and then over the last two years is where we've started to flatten that line, right? We would historically lose seven hundred kids. Two years ago, we only lost four hundred, a little around four hundred. Then this year, you know, we only lost about two hundred traditional kids. So like that line is flattening, which is why, and I'll get into this when we look at the projection models, why we're feeling comfortable that traditional enrollment, assuming nothing wild happens, will really flatten next year and then everything will then build up from that point in time.
Thanks, I think that's worth clarifying because you can look at this and you can say, oh, zero change in traditional schools, that doesn't seem very good at all. But then if you realize, oh, that's actually a change from losing hundreds of kids every year, I think that's meaningful.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I should have been more explicit with that. That is a really big accomplishment for our district.
Yeah, only the third time in the last thirty years that we've added kids to the overall portfolio and the other two bumps happen to coincide with the opening of new schools. And so, although we know that we can offer the highest quality without having to have a completely recapitalized portfolio of schools, the community is responsive to that type of investment. And so, as the Board considers timing for a new bond and/or the COP investment and how that is felt, that is seen and felt by community as a commitment to a longer, more sustainable future.
Okay, so talking a little more, boy, that looks small up there, a little more about enrollment projections. So historically, to Director Carey's point, historically, when we look at projections, we projected on a ten-year rolling average, right? And so, if you look at our ten-year rolling average at any course in time over the last thirty years, it shows a downward trend and that downward trend is six to seven hundred kids. And so, we kind of fell into this repeated pattern of the system telling schools, you're going to lose six to seven hundred kids and then schools losing six to seven hundred kids. And then, we just kind of, it was, you know, kind of confirmation bias in a sense. We just continued that belief pattern. So last year, or two years ago going into, or last year going into this year, we added the concept of target. Now, what target is, is we look at schools over the last five years and we say, how good have you done in any one grade level? And let's assume, let's positively assume that you're going to do that good, right? And so, then we transition from losing hundreds of kids to actually gaining kids. Now, this year, that strategy showed to work really well. We had a handful of schools who actually met their target. Most of our schools fell in between what their original downward projection would be and with that new target number established. So what that tells us, this is just like teaching with kids, right? If you establish a really meaningful goal that shows that they're going to do good things, even if they don't reach that goal, they're still going to do good things. And so, just by not telling our school, hey, you're going to lose seventy kids and by saying, you might actually gain five kids, even if they lost ten kids, that's still significantly better than where it was. Okay? So that's what we did this year, last year into this year. Now, this year going into next year, we've added a third category because remember, last year, we projected an add of students because it was really safe for us to do that in declining enrollment average. So we projected an add of five hundred traditional students because we really only risked one-fifth of that, right? And we had plenty of money set aside to protect against that. We can't be that off next year. And so, we built a budget projection this year that does a little bit of both. It assumes a little bit of the historical projection and assumes the benefit of the recent change in the slope of the curve to say, let's find a middle number that we can kind of build your projection off of. And so, as we were looking at staffing allocations, while schools are even staffed above the budget number, that's kind of what we looked at as, again, a middle ground number that we think takes into account some of the past, but also acknowledges that our line is changing, but does not overly put us at risk next year of saying, hey, we're going to add six hundred or seven hundred kids because next year we will feel the full amount of that, you know, enrollment that we're off. Okay? So that's kind of how projections are working this year. Schools have really found that to be beneficial and I'll talk about a little more data because, again, remember, we're trying to transition enrollment from being observational and operational to strategic. So the enrollment office historically said, hey, we manage projections, we manage choice, but it was an operational office and they did a great job of it. There's no disrespect at all, they did a wonderful job. But it didn't lean into schools around strategy about what you can actually do about it. And so, last year going into this year, we added a few data sets and so those data sets are up on that screen now and that's, this is for an elementary school and, you know, elementary school X. You'll see, we started to talk to schools about their capture rates, their birth capture rate. Because, I should ask the Board, what do you think is the number one narrative about why we have declining enrollment as a system?
Less kids, I'm sorry.
Yep, Superintendent Goll is correct, right? Every school is like, we have less kids. And while there is some truth to that, remember, we still have ten thousand kids a year that are choosing out of our system. Remember, the population of the county has doubled, so there are plenty of kids here, so we have to address that narrative and by providing birth capture rate for their attendance zone, it shows them, hey, you still have some room to grow. This school I have up here that will not be named is actually one of our great examples of positive trends. You know, obviously with our enrollment, we have some schools that have some more challenging trends, but we're working on that. On the right-hand side, you'll see just kind of their roll-up trends over time. So that's like, how many of our kindergartners moved up to first grade in that same school? How many first graders moved up to second grade? We're trying to look at where are we losing kids? Is there specific grades? Obviously, we know the transition between elementary and middle and middle and high school are big, but even for an elementary, are they losing kids from third to fourth grade? If so, why? So that's some of the strategic data we added this year, last year coming into this year. Now, we've added a new set of data that is really, I think, schools are really excited about. So this is for school X, where are their kids coming from? And so, what you'll see is they are largely neighborhood kids that are in a boundary, that's the graph on the left. But you'll see, we have a lot of kids who are driving a long distance to go attend that school. So the question becomes, why? Is it because of programming? Is it because of achievement? Is it because their parents work at that school? Why? You'll also see, we have information about where they're getting choice in from. So this school specifically gets a good amount from out of district, largely because they're a border school. They get a handful of kids from King and Fremont and all of those, right? So where are you getting kids from and why are they coming? That's really important data. Just as important is the, who are you not getting? Where are they, if they're leaving, where are they going to? And so, this is, this will show, hey, here's how many students who live in this attendance boundary are now going out of district, who are now going to another D eleven school, who are now, who have now moved out of state, all of those things. So we now have much more finite data on where people are coming from and where they're going to. Our next iteration of this, our volume three of this, is why, right? We still don't have great qualitative or quantitative data on the reasons why families are choosing in or choosing out. Now, we know societally what choice research tells us, but that's the next step for the enrollment office is interviews with families who are transitioning out to say, tell us really why? Because our survey participation rate right now isn't great, we're not getting the information we need. Once we have that information, we can build really comprehensive school-level strategies for enrollment, right? And again, that matters because we want as many kids as possible safely to attend our schools because they're great and also because enrollment is the largest driver of our budget.
I think the other shift that's really important here and I really appreciate the work, first, the idea of having a single chief resource officer who sees enrollment and budget together as one helps synthesize this work. No longer are we siloed in between who knows what and how we share that information. This idea of being active in the enrollment space, not just active as in saying a school is accountable by their school-based budget, the number of students you get is the number of dollars that you get, but I know that nobody knows their school better than the school itself. But I also don't ever expect the principal to be the best marketer. They have the marketing information, but they don't know how to market. They're not hired to be the marketer, they're hired to be the instructional leader of that school and community. So this year, and we started this last year, by bringing in an outside augmented contract to help us market target schools for target reasons. If you can get a marketer to spend, which is sometimes our team and sometimes an augmented contract, if you can get a marketer to spend just an hour and a half with a principal and four or five teachers, students and family members in the school, they create the campaign. That's what they get paid to do. We've been evaluating ourself on our principal's ability to sell their school. The principal sells the value of the school, let's bring marketers in to figure out how that works for the community itself. And so, that's been a really big change. We saw the return on investment last year, that the targeted schools were plus sixty-five kids, which sounds so tiny, but I think we paid a hundred thousand dollars for the contract and got, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of revenue from students back into it. So being very targeted in where it is that we think that we can get and why we can get it and then mine that data out of the school. It also attaches to the strategic visioning work that we ask our schools to go through. Every one of our schools is scheduled to do that on a three-year cycle. What is this school about? You tell us and the community what your school's about and then follow that up with a brand. We still have some brands outside of our schools that look like they were created in the seventies. You can incorporate that and celebrate the history and the heritage of the school, but boy, we know how reactive people are to the thing that looks good when they drive by it. So, I'm super excited to see all of those come together. And again, first time in thirty years that we've added kids, projecting zero loss at the traditional level and thinking about this as a system level. It is a portfolio of schools because that is what our families have demanded. It is a portfolio of schools. Our families want choice, we will provide them choice.
President Mapak, that's kind of the end of the enrollment section. I'm happy to move on to budget, I just didn't know if we wanted to ask any specific questions.
Any other questions in this regard so far? So one thing you said that we are going to come out of declining enrollment averaging next year, so we no longer will use that five-year enrollment averaging next year going forward?
We will not. Well, we could, but it will be lower than.
Lower than, yeah.
Yeah, we always obviously choose the best number for us.
Yeah, the best number. And the best number is going to be the number of enrolled kids that specifically.
It will and we'll get to kind of the why of that in terms of losing some big years, but yeah, we'll be out and it will be the best-case scenario for us and a challenge for us. Okay? All right, so kind of moving into budget, you guys have heard this from me before, I definitely won't make us read it aloud again, but everything that we're talking about, we are trying to increase our level of strategic processes to include budgeting. You just heard an example of how we're trying to be more strategic in enrollment for the benefit of schools, also for the benefit of our budget overall. So we're wanting to lean more and more into that space as much as we can. Just some high-level things the Board's aware of. This is kind of our overall general fund budget this year. Again, we spend the large majority, as do most organizations, on employee compensation at eighty-four percent. And we've done some kind of back digging to kind of look at what that's looked like over time and so this is an example of what our budget looked like in two thousand six, two thousand seven. Again, you'll see the large priority or majority of it is to salary and benefits, but it's a smaller clip and so we'll have a discussion as to partially why that may be the case. Just a comparison to kind of show the difference in time. Again, one of those big changes you'll see then that you don't see now is debt service. Again, we are very rare in, especially in a district of our size, that we currently don't carry any debt service for bond debt. Okay. And then again, as the Board knows, when we're also looking at how we spend our money, we look at kind of programmatically and we know that we're just shy of about sixty percent of our overall budget on instruction. Now, there are some other subcategories there that absolutely support instruction, instructional staff support and pupil services and school administration, but in terms of that like school-based allocation, we're just shy of sixty percent. Again, if we compare that to where we were, that's pretty largely remained unchanged in terms of our overall allocation to instruction at schools. And so, as we think about being more strategic and ensuring that we're focusing as much of our budget as possible on schools, I think a natural question is, what should that be? What should that percentage be? And then, how do we get there over time in a way that makes sense? So that we're really kind of continuing to show that we value schools most and that that's where our resources belong. As we look at kind of those salary changes from moving from seventy percent to eighty-four percent, one of the reasons why is because largely our overall staff makeup and amount of staff across the system has remained unchanged. While there's been ups and downs across employee groups, we've seen modest growth over the last twenty years in just our staff makeup. Again, that's not a terrible thing, but it does serve as a challenge when you put that against a thirty percent decline in enrollment. And so, that top of the funnel now is kind of what we're confronted with, which adds to some of our other challenge and again, I think allows us to decide where we want to continue to strategically invest in staffing. Yes, sir.
Ruben, can you refresh my memory? For the staff line, is that all District Eleven personnel? Is that instructional personnel?
This is all of it.
Instruction personnel?
This is all personnel, yeah. Across, so we have, remember, we have four employee groups, well, three, but kind of four. We have ESP, we have teachers and then we have exec bros that are broken into two categories in administration and professionals. And so, yeah, this includes all the Eleven staff.
Good question too. Would you say the last twenty years, is that twentieth year, twenty twenty-three? I mean, is it this year?
It is this year.
Okay.
Yes.
Sandra, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you have a question?
No.
And then, you know, this is really one of the most, this is what's serving as our largest challenge as we go into this year. While I acknowledged, we will be out of declining enrollment averaging, this assumes that we were to stay in declining enrollment averaging and this assumes that our enrollment in both traditional and charter sense stays exactly the same as it is right now. And the reason why that serves as a challenge is because you'll see that top member circled in red, that big twenty-four thousand kid year, that falls off of our five-year average next year with, just by that nature alone, we would lose funding for nearly seven hundred and fifty kids. So that's kind of the baseline we're working from, right? Is, we're already eight million dollars, I don't want to say in the hole, but there's already a gap there to acknowledge in terms of what just losing that big year means. And so, this is why, while it's going to be a challenge to get out of declining enrollment averaging, it is ultimately the right thing for us because it puts us more in control of our destiny. Otherwise, we're always going to be held to kind of, what's the next year we're losing? What's the next year we're losing? What's the next year we're losing? And so, as we get out of declining enrollment averaging and as we increase our traditional enrollment, we then are completely in control of our budget and then we only get to worry about the money we're getting from the state and not our enrollment. So that's just kind of the foundation setting. Again, as a factor to take into consideration, obviously, we had a large ESSR pot of money that we've been utilizing over the last number of years, that was over ninety million dollars, that we utilized in a variety of ways. One of those largest ways was in FTE. And so, what you'll see up there is what, all of the ESSR FTE that is currently in the system and then what's highlighted is what we have already been able to build into the general fund or into Fund Nineteen for preschool, but we've been able to absorb it into the system. And the reason that that has been possible is, remember, I came a couple of months ago and I talked about ghost FTE and all of those things. As we've been getting tighter and tighter in our staffing budget, we've been able to kind of say, hey, we need twelve preschool teachers, well, I have twelve ghost FTE over here, so I can kind of do that with minimizing the budget impact of adding staff because it is a challenging year to add staff. So you'll see preschool aides, preschool teachers, translators, interpreters, I apologize, that's a different shade, and then gifted and talented staff. And so, that also obviously is a really key part of our school staffing allocations and kind of where some of the budget realities that we're in right now. This is what we lovingly call the PBDA, the Preliminary Budget Development Assumptions. I can't think of a better acronym. And so, it's really small, but we found this way to do a zoom-in. You guys are going to be really impressed. Here we go. So this is the top part of the chart and I want to, there's a few things I want to highlight in here. As we're building our budget this year, we're working off of an assumption that we're going to receive a six-point-six percent increase from the state. That really closely aligns with what the governor released a couple of months ago and it just happens to make sense because the way we've broken it down, if you look at inflation this year, that's running about five percent. We assume we're going to get at least inflation from the governor's office as well as one-point-six percent. That accounts for the remainder of our budget stabilization. Remember, there's a commitment right now that they're going to pay off the remainder of the BS factor and so that's our share of that. So that's where we get six-point-six percent from. I don't think that it is going to be less than that. Obviously, it would be beneficial if it were more than that, but I think that's a fair assumption. It also happens to be right about the average of our last five years of allocations from the state. So there's a lot of factors that show us that that's, we hope, pretty close as we're building our assumptions. You'll also see there the change in per pupil, an increase of just shy of seven hundred dollars. And so, our estimated per pupil rate will go over eleven thousand dollars per kid. And then, you'll see there that number in red, that three million dollar, that's our starting right now without any compensation conversation, that's our starting mismatch. And so, that's the number that we work as hard as possible to match. There is a reasonable number that we can get that to that makes sense for the budget, right? We don't necessarily need to not have any mismatch, that might mean that we're not actually maximizing the use of our resources. But when you get to a mismatch that is too high, you are all but acknowledging that your recurring resources and recurring expenses are not in line. And so, that's like, you know, you have a budget as a homeowner and all of a sudden, you have to dip into your savings to pay off your monthly bills, right? That's never a great financial strategy. And so, we want that mismatch to be in a reasonable place that isn't jeopardizing to us, but also we're maximizing our recurring resources without over-saving and being overly protected. So we're starting in this budget development process with already a three and a half or almost just shy of four million dollar mismatch. Oh, one more thing. You'll also see our modeling right now shows a fund balance, so that's non-recurring money, starting again, without any conversation of compensation, around fifty-three million dollars. That's really high. That's really high. That's what we were carrying in kind of the COVID years when, and right after COVID, when lots of things that typically would be paid for by the general fund were being paid for by ESSR and because we had large issues with staffing vacancies, that's a really high fund balance to carry and while there's protection in that, that's not really us maximizing the use of our resources. There's a reasonable place for our fund balance to fall that, and we'll talk about that, that aligns with kind of where we are historically. Okay, then we get to the middle and you'll see, based on the projection of a traditional enrollment that is consistent with this year and an increase of over eleven hundred kids of charter school students, you'll see an increase of fifteen million dollars. Now, then you'll see that fourteen million dollars of that goes directly to the charter schools. That's not because they're taking our money from us, that's because if their enrollment wasn't here, we wouldn't be getting that, right? That money is, we're a flow-through for them. And so, our real net resource, assuming all of those assumptions are true, is about one-point-six million dollars, which isn't a lot of new recurring money. Then, as we zoom in, you'll see that we already have modeled a benefit increase of about one-point-six million dollars. We'll see where that falls out. I think there's some wiggle room with Kaiser on that, but there will be a benefit increase. Now, that will be capped because of the new contract, but we're modeling that at one-point-six million dollars. So what you'll see is already, the new recurring money we have is already spent. It's already spent in that benefits increase. And then, you'll see on the right-hand side, what we traditionally call the incremental budget requests, we've made them non-recurring because we have. We've made them non-recurring because we have still significant non-recurring money and we are going to have a challenging recurring budget bill. So that's why that, that, uh, we've made that that way, right? And that's okay, we can do that safely. So again, um, as we model down, oop, that was the last one, sorry. As you look down, you'll see again, we, we're just trying to kind of manage that mismatch when we think about compensation and any other recurring priorities that the, the, the board would like us to look at. Big picture bu- budget overview, happy to answer any specific questions about where we are.
So questions, and just so I have clarity too, from Dr. Comfort and Superintendent Gaul, is there any specific feedback that you need from the board or an ask from the board at this point in time? Or is this just purely informational at this point in time? That we are providing this information to you, to us, and also to the general public?
I think the, the open question is, is, you know, where's the board on its comfort level of expected mismatch and/or tapped into or untapped into reserves on the non-recurring side? So we can then get the finality of what we wanna recommend, what we, so our goal is just a little bit of guardrails of that looks great, or I think there's too much of this, or not enough of that. Like you all have that dialogue to give us what you believe is the direction to go get in the devil of the details of that budget.
I think that's a conversation we are taking into executive session.
Great.
So.
Just a clarifying question. Whatever the mismatch ends up being, we are going to pull it from that reserve pile of money, that, that forty-nine million, or?
No, so because it's a recurring mismatch, we can't really, um, we can't really spend recurring, non-recurring money to cover it. Now, what, what it is, is that non-recurring money sits there as protection against it, right?
Right.
Um, but we, it, it's always, it's always a, a line of like, you can have a higher mismatch if you have a, a higher fund balance because you always have that pot of money that, that's there to kind of protect you. But we don't actually pay it off.
Okay.
Uh, it just kind of sits there and we, and we just kind of manage it.
And issue book, okay.
Um, to make sure that as we get into the mid-year, it hasn't grown too much. Because if it grows too much, then we need to think about reducing recurring resources.
Right, and then you had mentioned, coming back to the discussion of what a typical fund balance is and that our fifty-three million from the other side was a little high. Even the forty-nine million here with some of these earmarked pieces that we're considering, what do typical districts run in their general fund as reserves for what you did?
Pre, pre-COVID, District eleven ran twenty to twenty-five million.
Okay.
Um, which is still, in my opinion, healthy.
Yeah.
Um, because on top of that, there's still Tabor reserves, like there, there's still all of those protections there. And so that's, that's an adequate amount of money to cover emergencies, to allow the system to continue to operate because there are costs that come up. And that's kind of where we land. And now, obviously, again, over, over the pandemic, that, that exponentially grew. And so I think the larger conversation is, how do we get that back to a reasonable place and, and against what strategy?
Great, oh, final question. When we add recurring raises to this budget, that's going to increase this mismatch?
It will, yes, yes.
So just so everybody understands, when we, when we're looking at raises here in the coming months, that three million mismatch is gonna grow depending on how much recurring raises we choose to give.
Absolutely.
So, we're being, we're looking at it intently.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The twenty to twenty-five million, sorry, was that the unassigned reserves or the mismatch that you said?
The unassigned reserves, yeah.
Unassigned reserve.
But I'll take it as a mismatch. Sorry.
Well, on that note, so.
That'd be mismatch.
What, I'd be curious what our mismatch has been, you know, in the last five years or just a decade ago compared to now, just some general ideas of what we have run as mismatch.
Would you like me to just kind of give you an answer or like pull some data?
Like, do you have like an average?
I think it's like a trend or something like that.
Yeah.
I think historically, we ran around a two to three million dollar mismatch.
Okay.
And what's a year where the mismatch has been the highest that we've had?
This year in the adopted budget, now again, if you remember the mid-year, it didn't come in that high because there were some adjustments. The adopted budget was about, well, it wasn't this, it was about six.
Six and a half.
Six and a half, six point seven million dollars.
And the direction of the board last year was to make sure it was under eight.
Yeah.
Right, because we were, and so we have been pitching this idea of not making giant reactions. We've been working on the ESER fund balance challenge since last year. But how do we gradually get ourself to that long-term sustainability? We built to this space that we've been, we're still dealing with the losses associated pre-COVID and COVID, just starting to show themselves in the decrease in enrollment averaging now. So we're really addressing problems that are four or five years behind us, but they're starting to show themselves in a fiscal nature right now. And so what we wanna do is again, the strategies of the district are clearly working at the minimum level. Enrollment is up, achievement is up, our engagement in the community is up. We don't wanna take a knee-jerk reaction that says, get that mismatch to whatever the number is somebody says in one year. Because again, we, we're trying to find this idea of, um, holding harmless at the closest place to the student. A student doesn't know if the staff member was ESER-funded, if they're title-funded, if they're general fund-funded, if they're non-recurring or recurring. The student just knows the power of that relationship and how it realizes to an opportunity for learning, for them to exceed their potential. And so if we can protect that bubble by letting these numbers drift the very slight amount that they need to, to stay within safeguard rails, then we protect the strategy of the district. Otherwise, we end up chasing our tail. And then what we've seen clearly over the last twenty years is when we don't have a clear strategy, people opt out because they have choice. And when people have choice, they go to a place where they don't think, they're not sure if their favorite teacher from last year is, is or isn't gonna be in the school next year. They wanna know that there's stability there and they expect us to make the changes on the margin to be able to, to get there.
Just to build on what Superintendent Gaul said, we absolutely can build a multi-year strategy that gets us to a mismatch that makes sense, to a fund balance that makes sense. And we can do that in a way that preserves and continues to, to resource schools. The fact that we have managed school allocations and we've added allocations in a variety of ways, we didn't even talk about, we've added GT, we've added ELL staff, we've added, um, a preschool, you know what I mean? We're adding resources.
We added ten APs.
Yes, we added APs. And we're still in a decent place. We can build a multi-year budget process that gets that mismatch in a place where it needs to be. And it doesn't do that in a significant way that makes schools bear the brunt of that.
Right, cool.
Just if anyone is wondering that's watching, that fund balance of fifty-three million is on top of what we've already allocated. If you all remember, last year, we went that fund down, balanced task force and allocated money to spend over the next several years towards different projects. That's a separate pot of money. So this is in addition now what's built up this year.
Wow. Yeah, this is why we, we, we do wanna get tighter in our budgeting process. Because again, because of our, of our, of our current staffing process, we overstaff in the system, not in schools. And then we underspend because those positions are never filled or even posted. And then we accrue these large fund balances. So, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have another twenty million dollars in vacancy savings this year, right? That's, that's included in that fifty-three million. And that's because we do have vacancies in schools, but it's also because we have all of these other positions that we're working to clean up. We're cleaning up a lot of those right now in order to balance the school staffing things. And so that will be, uh, a lot tighter moving forward, which means our resources will be where they're supposed to be upfront, instead of waiting for the mid-year to come and say, hey, can we spend ten million dollars in next year's mid-year to do this? And, and you know what I mean? We'll be upfront in those allocations in a way that I think makes more sense for schools.
Cool.
So we're excited. Uh, we think it'll be a, um, a very strategically aligned budget build. We feel that we're much further in front of that. In spite of the challenges that exist, we like the numbers that are on there and think that there's still more opportunity for us to get what we know is working to scalability and sustainability. That's really the goal here is for the strategy to rest and sit and actually realize what it was intended to do. We're excited, I, I, I think probably the largest challenge that we have is for people to understand the risk associated with recurring and the flexibility associated with non-recurring. And our community has been trained to believe that recurring is where the value proposition is. The value proposition is, is I get this and it is now protected forevermore. This conversation needs to be, if you just look at those numbers, we gotta manage the red and there's some wiggle room in, 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 in the black number on, on the non-recurring side. When we're thinking about compensation, it is about total compensation of how it is that we're able to use the dollars that we have and not obligate ourselves to a place that we're not sustainable. And so, and I, I really appreciate the synthesis of the work that's now happening. I talked about enrollment and the budget, and now you're really seeing budget and staffing. And that was the other part of the chief resource officer position, which is now ghost positions are going away because we're creating a system where the things that we advertise for and the things that people sit in have to be balanced against the budget. Carrying and asking the board to approve a budget for positions that never existed was a real challenge for this district. That's going away. But that also means that we gotta be a lot tighter in the out-years. Because in the out-years, there isn't gonna be these giant opportunities at mid-year to make large corrections. Everything has to get closer to glide slope for us to ensure that the child gets the dollar in August, not in April or May. Because the dollar programmed in August will realize the learning, the social, emotional, cognitive learning supports, the wraparound services, the idea of overwhelming the school with the resources they need at the front end instead of a distribution of things in January, February thereafter, where they, just from a time perspective, they've lost half the year to be realized. When we have the opportunity to make mid-year budget, we will. But what we wanna be is more specific and strategically aligned at the front of the year instead of constantly correcting halfway through the year.
Uh, two, two notes, of course. So one is just an expression of concern and the other one is a question. The concern is that some of these vacancies or ghost positions that, maybe there are positions that should be filled, where we used to have, say, four positions and, and somebody isn't hiring or can't hire and the other three people are picking up the work, but it's still the work of four people. And I hope that you are paying attention to that. Is there any reassurance you would have on that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
We don't want people to burn out.
I apologize for.
No, that's all right.
Um, so let me first start with schools. So we are just now, as of today, I'm still sending them out, we're sending out final school staffing allocations. We sent out initials. And then in that week that happened between then and now, the finance office, because now position control is in the finance office where it should be, is cross-checking all of those positions that are on school allocations against what we would call ghost FTE. There is no way that we cut a position that actually is on a school staffing allocation, right? So we're gonna find a pot, we've already found a pot that's covering some of those things. Now we're gonna move centrally and say, okay, there are some positions where it's like, hey, we just stopped posting that because we found another strategy, but we really need it, okay? But there are still significant positions that haven't been posted. Some of our jobs have been posted for over two and a half years. And so then it's a strategic conversation with that chief to say, is the position still the answer? If it is, okay, we'll figure that out. If it's not, what's your other strategy? So the, the, the ghost FTE, please, please hear me, the ghost FTE is not connected to any person. Again, remember, it is not positions that are in schools, it's not positions that are posted, it's not even positions that are vacant. It is positions that are in that fourth world that exist in the budget but have never made it down that stream. And so there's no chance that we've cut any school-based positions that are ghost FTE. And now we're doing that exact same cross-check with, with central office.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a follow-up question?
I did, um, but not follow-up at the same time, it's just different. So if we do go for the certificate of participation funding, how does that impact what we are seeing here? And I, I think I know the answer, but just for, to make sure, because I don't wanna assume and it would be a good explanation hopefully for the public as well.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't impact anything here in the sense that there's already a set aside funding source for it, right? So typically, or I don't wanna say typically, sometimes, uh, bond debt or COP debt is paid out of the general fund. So you would see a red line there, right? You would see a COP nineteen ninety-six, one million dollars, whatever it is, right? But because that money is funded through the, the capital budget, through the MLO, it doesn't impact the PBDA because that money's already set aside.
But it would, it would be an increase in money for facilities, correct? So in theory, it would be more income.
That is correct, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And we just, we aren't seeing that because we aren't planning.
Yes.
On that for sure, okay.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
Any other feedback or questions? Dr. Comfort, if you can pull back to the top, uh, that, that graph that you had. I just, my takeaway is when I look at the graph, that student change, staff change past twenty years.
Sorry.
When you showed that.
I have a lot of graphs, I didn't know which one to know.
And this was an information I asked you a month or so back. When I look at that, that trend, how, uh, the district has lost students and comparatively our staffing allocation or staffing, um, in our schools have relatively stayed the same. In some years, they have marginally grown, grown. The easy thing for a board or for administration to look at this and say, we need to go and cut staffing in our schools. However, what Superintendent Gaul, and I appreciate what you have presented to the board is to reflect the board priorities that right now, we need to be investing in our schools. And I want our community to listen to this. Sometimes, um, uh, we get like conflicting information out there that, uh, staffing positions in schools are going to be cut. And that's not what we are seeing out here. We are doubling down and we are saying that the best possible, uh, way to highest quality, uh, achievement, to achievement is, uh, I'm stumbling on the words.
The only way to achieve achievement is?
Access to high quality.
Access, okay, yeah, access to high-quality instruction, so, um, and that's what we are doubling down on here by the staffing allocation. So I do appreciate that we are trying to preserve that at schools and providing, uh, school. But that means that we do have a challenge in the budget that we are presented out there. If we have to provide meaningful compensation for our staff, especially on the recurring side, we got to pinch money somewhere else. And that's the conversation that the board will, um, you know, indulge in over the next two or three months. How do we make sure that, um, through inflation and all the cost of living expenses that we value and honor our staff and we are able to provide them a meaningful compensation? But what we are certainly not doing is cutting staff to meet that need, especially teacher positions at our schools. So would that be a fair reflection to say?
Yeah, absolutely. So just to be fully transparent, right, our, our schools are already filling the, the reduction in some support because of ESER, right? And so we were able to manage that largely, um, in the best way that we can, that maximizes resources there. What this, what our, what our plan for the budget development this year is, is that we're not balancing the budget on the backs of schools.
Right.
Right? It doesn't mean that every school is getting more FTE. It doesn't mean that there's not a single school that isn't losing an FTE, right? What we're, what we're saying is overall, it's more FTE in schools next year than there will be this year. And that's our resourcing of schools. We're not going to balance the budget, uh, this is me speaking, not for the board, I apologize. That we're not going to balance the budget on, on the backs of schools. That we're gonna figure out another strategy.
And the, the two-way dialogue is open. So last year, we implemented a strategic staffing initiative where we took the MLO-funded positions that sit for, uh, really for us to distribute as needed in a two-way conversation. Getting to school or student-based budgeting is the critical component to finally realizing we are all ultimately accountable for where parents choose to send their kids. We've been very observational about how parents choose, but we've never really completed that into a circle that says, wait a second, if I wanna be the school about this, then I have latitude in my budget to provide that. Giving our school leaders that buy-in last year was a critical component to them really believing and trusting that Dr. Comfort in the staffing allocation model isn't going to recommend that you balance a budget on the backs of schools. So I, I implore our school leaders and our community to connect with, I'm, I'm sorry, our board leaders and the community to connect with school leaders and ask them, how are you feeling about the budget? How did you feel about last year's budget? How are you feeling about the communications and how quickly and how accurately they came out this year compared to the number of changes that we had last year? We were, we were going back and forth on what we thought it was. There was great clarity this year based upon a, a, a well-developed projection for enrollment on what we think that funding model can be. And they love the fact that they get buy-in to say, I believe that my school needs that, which is a little bit different than, remember, the idea of a staffing formula works on a PBDA, but it never works in the reality of a school. Because kids don't show up in twenty-five unit chunks, they just don't do it. And nor do they then choose courses at secondary level in twenty-five, uh, unit chunks. Nor do they decide what are their after-school activities in. Nor do they decide what are their after-school activities in nice even numbers. So we're excited about this evolution of a budget to a space where it becomes full circle of, tell us what you want to be, how do we resource you to be that? And then how was that received and, and, and felt within the community? Ultimately, we have to be responsive to what the community says that they want in the classroom.
And the PBDA that we are looking at right now is a work in progress. So there's still conversations, the DAC budget subcommittee reviewed the, what are they called?
IVRs, yeah.
Requests last week and they'll be providing some feedback to the board. So you know, that number of four point six million, that, that's not set in stone. There's still more conversations that will be happening.
And as we saw last year, the SFA didn't drop until.
Right.
You know, very late. And at one point, we thought we would be short fourteen million dollars about forty-eight hours prior to the SFA. So the staff has built those contingencies. They understand this is the target that we're communicating to the board and to our community that we believe is the realistic number. So if you can go to that slide, the six point six. So if the number is not six point six. Yeah, where, yeah, there, where is there? If it's not six point six, that's where we're starting from. So when people then want to pick up documents and say, you said this was your mismatch and this was your contingency. It all starts from number of students times per pupil funding equals, then it's a debit sheet from there. And then we make the offsets and the investments we want to make. But, you know, we love the fact that we feel good about that number. Again, last year, we felt great about that number until we felt awful, and then we felt wonderful. That's the nature of how state-level budgets are passed. So lobby for your school funding.
Okay, so thank you. The one other feedback that I have, and we talked about enrollment and the traditional projected enrollment for next year is supposed to be stable. Hopefully, we are also, and I know that we are already doing some of the marketing strategies, but we can come to a point in time. And maybe that is going to be this year, when August, when our schools reopen, our traditional enrollment is going to be not stable, but it's going to trend upwards. So hopefully, we come to a space where we can talk about adding schools to our traditional schools.
Yeah, we've got a couple of schools that we've set a challenge that we'd love to have a waitlist. How do we get to a space where we actually have to answer questions that come, which is how do we prioritize an over-capacity issue? We don't have that, but we believe that we have programs that will create that over-demand opportunity. And then everybody can be happy because we can continue to share what other programs exist if you can't get into that school. We don't have that right now. And I'm, and I'm coming from communities where we had lotteries. We had lotteries and, you know, if you get into steel, that ought to mean that you're going to be in the remodeled Palmer High School because you're in the Ivy Pathway. Like, we should have people coveting that opportunity instead of a passive experience of, you know, we'll wait to see what happens when it happens. Selling District eleven as a district of choice, being active in the choice space is the difference-maker of what this board has enabled the administration to be able to do.
And I love hearing that, that we can have that type of problem, waitlisting students. When you go back fifteen or twenty years, I wasn't in District eleven or engaged in District eleven at that time. But from what I hear, when the choice window opened, people used to line up outside Doherty High School to get into Doherty. So if we can get to that type of space where we are the district that pro- excellent in choice.
Yeah, and I just, you know, it's a competitive market, but I don't want people to think that we're seeking to be a winner for someone else to be a loser. I'm going to use starting salaries last year that the board approved for us to be very aggressive on those new to the teaching sector, for us to go from forty-two thousand to fifty thousand. Every district in El Paso County responded to that. That's great for education.
Yeah.
That is a wonderful place. We made investments in tracks, at track and field at Coronado and Mitchell. I really hope that that forces a northern district to make the same investment at a high school, very near Doherty High School. Now, I love the fact that we might be attracting families because we got it first. But if everybody has a new track and field in El Paso County, what a wonderful place for our city and for our families. If choice can increase the quality of what everybody delivers, everybody wins. Every, we are a growing county and we are a growing community. El Paso County, Colorado Springs is a district and a city, a county and a city on the rise. Everybody wins by us making the number-one way to student achievement is access to high-quality instruction and getting the compensation that it requires to have the professionals that can deliver on that.
Can I just kind of zoom out a little bit? When you made the comment about lobby for more funding in education, it reminded me of a public comment we had a few weeks ago about property taxes going up, so school districts are getting more money, and that is not true. That is not the case. School districts receive funding two ways, local property taxes and state income tax. The amount of money we receive that is needed to cover the per-pupil funding is not covered fully by local property taxes. So the state backfills with state income tax. So when we see local property taxes go up, that bucket of money arises, but then it means the state is having to backfill less. So what's, we're not necessarily going to get more, it's not. The state budget itself is actually going to balloon. Because I find it, I'm very skeptical that the state would in turn increase the amount of per-pupil funding commensurate to the amount that they saw the balloon in their budget because they aren't having to backfill as much from that rise in local property taxes. So that maybe is like really detailed, but I want people to understand that we're not necessarily getting more money because of your property taxes going up, so.
Okay, thank you. That was a good explanation. With that, we are at the five o'clock mark, we allocated one hour. And we will move on to the next urgent item, which is task force updates. I think two or three months back, the board got, there are several task forces, by the way. The board got updates on three task forces, if I remember right, in November. And now we are going to get task force updates on three more. So Superintendent Gaul, I had to go over to you. Vice President Healy has to leave for a prior commitment. She's going to be calling the Doherty playoff basketball game. So hopefully, you bring some good news for us with the playoff basketball. Two high schools are.
I was one last night, so that's really good.
Yeah, Doherty and Palmer are both playing high school playoff basketball games.
I'll, I won't belabor this much, we talked about it before. This idea of a task force is a cross-functional way for us to solve longstanding problems. Oftentimes, the, the problem-solving capacity of an organization is limited by the capacity of the individual that owns the problem. And so what we've done is we've decided to take the best from several parts of our organization and wrap them around the problem. And so we have three tonight. I'm going to start with our, sorry, I do have a couple of slides to frame that again. We're moving from this command structure of hierarchical, of what one person says is what needs to happen. We're probably in a command of teams structure right now. Our goal is to get to a team of teams, that the problem defines the solution. If we know what the problem is, we can then bring in the experts to surround that problem itself. Right now, problems sit within teams and we're trying to find that cross-functional way to solve them. The problems aren't new, they're not unique to District eleven. They aren't to suggest that people aren't working hard. Everybody's working very hard. Nobody's moving as fast as District eleven. But the reason that the fast pace is working is that we're bringing in the right people at the right time to solve those challenges. I'll skip that slide. This is just how, why, how and what relates to ends, ways and means. Having people centered on the why of the problem, instead of the widgets or the strategy, is the difference-maker. People go to war over what they believe instead of why they believe. And so we're trying to get ourselves to a place where we're centered on that why, and that really forms it. That's our normal change management slide. This is how we manage what we do. These are the ones that we have gone through before. And tonight, we're going to go through, we're going to start with new teacher training and induction. And I'm going to bring Liz Tenkate and her team forward to address that. There are just two to three slides per topic, so I'll ask that we let them go through the slides, open up to questions for the board, and then we'll bring the next task force forward. Liz, the control is to you.
Control is to me, awesome.
You have the con.
I have the con. Good evening. Really excited to be here tonight to talk about this task force. I think this work, I am newer to D eleven and this work is incredibly exciting. I just kind of wanted to frame, you know, listening to the budget conversation and just talking about, right, what is the number-one way to increase student achievement? Access to high-quality instruction, right? And I think, you know, this, this piece of teacher burnout that we're seeing, COVID certainly prompted that, but we're seeing, you know, some of the data that we've been looking at compared to so many different fields. We have forty-four percent of teachers saying they feel burned out or highly burned out nationally. So this is really an issue. How are we going to recruit, but also retain and develop teachers so that they can be really powerful influences in kids' lives? And we can grow them and keep them here. So, okay. So the initial work was really to put together a team that was representative of our district. So we have administrators, we have brand-new teachers, we have alternative licensure teachers, we have teachers who are in their second to fifth year of teaching. Principals, central admin staff, HR, all present on the task force. We wanted to sort of have a representation of many different voices. And really, you know, the norms in the room are you take your hat off. Everyone is in this work as an equal and equal voices. So we built the, the team. And then we started to dig into thinking about who would be the user groups with this task force. Again, really, these three new, brand-new rookie or alternative licensure teachers, teachers who are new to our system, but not necessarily new to teaching. And then teachers who are in their second to fifth year of teaching, so newer. And we created surveys, surveys for each group to really get their feedback. And here, how has your experience been? We have the three promises. Are you getting access to coaching and feedback on a regular basis? Do you have collaborative planning time and is it meaningful to you? And do you have access to high-quality professional learning that's growing your capacity? So we were able to distribute a survey with the help of Dr. Colicky's office and got a lot of information back to bring to the team, which we've been examining. Right now, we are actually in the design thinking lab with all of that information. And the team is beginning to go through all of that empathy work and really reading all of the comments and understanding what is actually happening for our teachers in our system right now. I should also frame, like, the question for this to solve, right, and to engage in, in this design thinking work, is how might we progress with new-to-profession teacher training to have better ongoing wraparound support for our NOPS teachers throughout the year? But really, the idea is how do we create the best ongoing support system in this region for teachers so that we can grow, retain them, and ultimately affect student achievement? In the design labs, we go through design sprints. So our first design sprint was really around what do we need and envision for teachers to be able to do effectively in a classroom? What does that look like? And so it was, you know, teams creating these circles around what is the classroom experience need to look like? Look like? What does high quality in D eleven, what is the D eleven way for instruction? What does that mean? And how do we sort of norm on what is high-quality instruction in our district? So that we can then plan what would the support speed to bring that to life? That was our first design sprint. Really fun.
So our second design sprint had a lot of work to do with empathy. And so we were asked to, all of us were asked to, based on questions that teams had created, what good questions would be gathering the kind of information that we want if you were a new teacher or an alternative license? So that team created questions that they wanted to utilize when they went out to do their empathy interviews. And then also, we split the group into two groups that were going to concentrate on new, but new to D eleven. So we had the rookies and then we had the other one. Each group came up with their unique questions as well. So the team took those questions to the, the people. And so we gathered all that information. And it was astounding how much similarity there was in the questions. And yet, for each unique category, you could see the level of sophistication of the responses as well. So it really gave us great insight. We were able to compare what we got from our empathy interviews with the survey data. Again, there was a lot of consistency in the data, many which kind of we were referring to feelings of overwhelm, overwhelming, needing more time, wanting to have mentorship and coaching, wanted to have that time embedded in the school day. And just a variety of things that everybody was kind of working towards this idea without going to solutions right away. We were talking about how great it was to get this information so we could then go out to other businesses, other companies, other school districts that were doing great work and utilize some of their thinking too, about what we might be able to integrate in ours, in our upcoming program that would even make that productivity, the retention, the recruitment stronger for D eleven.
Yes, at the design thinking lab, we looked at United and we looked at their training program. We looked at Toyota University. We looked at a school district that does a really interesting, there's multiple modules, it's very differentiated. Teachers earn credit in a variety of ways, work towards advanced degrees. But, so we were looking at, we looked at Arizona State University, that's doing some really innovative things in their teacher ed program, to look at organizations who have really defined this vision for what does it mean to onboard people and then support them and grow them and keep them to ultimately affect, right, the bottom line, and in our case, that's student achievement. So really interesting reading, before I open it up to comments, at one of the articles that was shared, and I love reading geeky data stuff, but from ERS was really, they, so there was a study of three large urban systems that hire more than one thousand one hundred new teachers each year. And during this study, they found that if there is a strategic approach to rookie teacher recruitment, placement and development, students taught by rookie teachers could gain an average of three point five to four point two additional months of learning each school year. And that, like, it gives me goosebumps. That's amazing. And so I think the vision for what is possible in D eleven is really exciting. We're still in the earlier stages. We're going to move into the ID eight and then prototype next. But I think this work is incredibly critical and I'm really excited to be a part of it.
Just real briefly, if you guys could kind of summarize, not by name, but who's on the task force? Just so the board understands.
Probably better with the.
Okay. On the screen up there, you'll see Devin Roush, he's in the orange shirt. He is a middle school science teacher at Swigert. He's in the ALP program. He was very vocal in his surveys about what was missing when we got new teacher information back. And so he was a great addition to the team to provide a very authentic voice. Next to him is Sarah Bailey. She's a high school teacher at Doherty. She was new in induction last year and she is a teacher who chose all classes of ninth grade ELA this year because she did her training in ninth grade ELA last year, and she just found it such a wonderful fit. On the bottom left is Carrie Dupey. She is an experienced teacher who is from out of town. She is from, give me a second.
Kindergarten at Chiquita.
Kindergarten at Chiquita, thank you very much. Excellent. And we went out to different people to try to find really great candidates when we were looking for people who had that mindset that could be part of this work. And then, of course, you see me, Liz, we have a DAC member, Vicky McLaughlin, who is on our team, who's extremely passionate about that work, along with Jamie Elkins-Green, who is an area superintendent coach, Nancy Shanklin, who is a teacher's coaching, teacher's coach. We also have Christine Flores, and she is a second-grade teacher at Wilson. She is a new teacher and a mentor. So very unique situation, new to D eleven and a mentor. And so we have quite a.
Dr. Frye, we also have Dr. Frye.
Yes, we have Dr. Carol Frye. And I just contacted Matt Baldwin. Um, and I just contacted, um, Matt Baldwin at Coronado and he's very interested in joining our team as a high school voice. And also Brent Urban, he was highly recommended because of his out of the box thinking and the different things that he brought, innovative practices and instruction. So we will be calling in specific people who we feel like are gonna give a really needy voice to the work that we're doing when we get to those specific prototypes and things like that. And, and we'll call different people in to make sure that we have their inputs. So that's the makeup generally of the team.
Thank you. Any feedback or questions on the presentation side of that?
So what, just really high level, what were some of the things you were hearing in the survey and the interviews? What, you know, when you spoke to the person in orange, I can't remember his name.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said that he had some great stuff, can you just hear it? Not to put him on the spot. Yeah, actually he came to mind when you started your question. So he was at my table and he was close to tears in describing his experience of just like some of the challenges that he was not prepared for, um, in terms of differentiation, how to effectively scaffold. He's super passionate, he loves kids, he's really excited to be here. But, you know, feeling like there's not enough time in the day. Um, how do I support, um, specifically he was working with his multilingual learners and going home and spending hours thinking about how could he make information more accessible? What could he translate? And already at the table, some of, you know, one of the principals and another teacher was like, here are six different ideas we have to support you. And he was like, wouldn't it have been great if I actually had some of this several months ago? Back in August, when I was, um, had a longer runway for my work. But, um, a lot of what people are expressing is this is really hard work. They want ongoing support with, um, how to, what are highly effective practices? And how to implement them in your classroom? Classroom management strategies have surfaced a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, social emotional learning and the need to understand how to build culture in a classroom, um.
I have, I have a couple of others, if you don't mind, um, some of the challenges identified specifically for that group. Inconsistent mentoring within every school, um, inconsistent PLC experiences and a lack of team collaboration at specific sites where it was, seemed to be all or nothing. The PLC information either came in super, super great, right on task, or I haven't been in one. So that's an area of consistency that we can work on. And again, as Liz referred to, classroom management. And, um, another one was inconsistent District eleven expectations, depending on what campus you were on. So processes, procedures, operational things, um, super, super good information for us to look. And like I said, there's similarities between each group, but there's also really some nuances between each group and the challenges and the insights, the things that went well and the things that didn't go well.
Yeah, and what, what I, I want the board to understand, the goal here was not to have to have somebody's first, second or third year be dependent solely on whether or not they got that support from their principal.
Mm-hmm.
We have just as many by percentage new principals in the system as we do have new teachers or new to teaching educators in the system. How do we take the composite and, and collective, um, resources that we have and ensure that everybody is getting a level of support that ensures their success? Last year, we doubled down on being the highest in the region to attract new educators into the system. We have to deliver on the supports for them, or otherwise we're just gonna keep priming a pump that doesn't stay. We want people to join us, if they wanna be here for a career, wonderful. If they wanna be here for part of their adult career, wonderful. If they wanna be here for a New York minute, we wanna be able to give them the supports that they need to be as successful as possible, cuz that's what our students need. Number one way to student achievement is access to high quality instruction. This we think will be a critical first path. And then it expands, once we get past new to teaching, training and induction, then how do we handle folks who might have struggled with their time in teaching? And get them the resources to make sure that they get there. Again, not that our principals aren't already trying to do that, but watching a principal just do that alone from central office is why central office is here to help, is generally an oxymoron in public education. We're trying to flip that all the way back to last year. The network support model is flipping the structure that central office exists to support the needs of schools. This is a perfect example of that and I appreciate the very accelerated work. And particularly the use of design thinking to bring people together to find that empathetic solution that works for people instead of people feeling told what to do.
Uh, can you just remind me or, or inform me, what are the deliverables of this task force down the line? Be- based on your use of the word empathy on this slide, um, it's kind of seeming to me like we're still very much in the stage of kind of listening to teachers and hearing their concerns and hearing their feedback. So can you tell me, what are the deliverables and what is the time scale? Are you planning on making recommendations to the chief academic officer? Is this things that are gonna filter down into the principal level? Or, or what, what exactly is, is kind of the roadmap moving forward?
Yeah, I think the group, so the next phase of this work is to take the ideas and begin to refine, refine, refine. For example, some of the things that came up, let's say one of them was, um, right? Like time is a huge issue, where there's never enough time and there's all these things to learn. What if we created a system of monthly ongoing, um, PD that was X, Y and Z, right? Like, so we begin to ideate and prototype that. The idea would be we can make the group can narrow down what the ultimate support program could look like, um, by the end of the year is my understanding, right? And make our budget-
But this year's hires coming into next year.
So that next year we can start, um, this fully fleshed out support program.
I think one thing I would just caution you to be aware of as a teacher who's, you know, relatively young myself is, there's a big difference between I don't have enough time because I'm operating inefficiently and, you know, PD could address that and help me lesson plan in a more efficient way or grade in a more efficient way or what have you, and I don't have enough time because I'm overtasked. Those are two very different problems with very different solutions needed. So I would just urge you to be aware of that distinction.
Yeah, we don't think the answer here is, um, uh, professional development only. And so I'll change the analogy, I never met, felt more supported as an instructor pilot than I did in my first year as an instructor pilot. I actually had a limited caseload of students because it was my first year. My first year in teaching people how to fly airplanes, I could only fly with certain groups of students that we knew were the least amount of risk and I had a limited caseload. And every Monday and Friday, I had planning time that was with my mentor instructor. That was baked into my schedule. And right now, everybody is thrown in the fire because we're a system that doesn't have enough staff. And then we're constantly churning cuz we don't have enough staff, cuz we burn through our staff. Could we invent, could we create, could we, and then employ a system where we hire, we make job offers in, in April? And then part of your onboarding, which we would pay for that time, is you shadow in summer bridge to start to get examples of on the job training to understand how classroom management can work for you before. And again, as we have the calendar conversation, the first day of school, I got twenty-five kids and they're my responsibility for a whole year. So without overwhelming the system and without adding to task, how do we actually now create a, not only a survivable year, a thrivable year?
Yeah.
A thrivable year. And, and again, at the end of my first year, I was then moved to the, that's the guy that can take on the hard students. But I had the protection in the space to be able to develop and show that I had that skill set. Right now, it's too much trial by fire. That doesn't mean anything, that principals aren't trying hard and educators aren't showing up with all the right intents to do it. We just haven't built the system to do that for them. And no other sector ever puts their youngest employees or least experienced employees into the, into that line of fire without knowing that they have those supports. So we wanna create something that we're gonna take from outside and inside education to put together into a place that says, this is how much D eleven cares about the number one way to student achievement is access to high quality instruction. We care so much that you have that first year.
Yeah, one of the ideas that was surfaced was like a residency, right? An on-ramp residency type program. So lots of ideating right now, um, but it's quite different.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next task.
David, you're up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you again, and I just wanna phrase this as kind of a bookend to the previous, previous one. Because where they're looking at it from the perspective of the early teacher, first new to D eleven teacher, what the evaluation task force is looking at is really looking at how might we leverage some of the strengths that we have in the district to, to improve evaluations and really tighten up this process. So what do I mean by that? So the takeaways are that we have, we have sites, and I think we can all name several of them, that are bucking every trend, right? High FRL and yet they're getting growth percentages in the sixties, seventies, sometimes eighties. Just laser focused, laser focused, um, support from the chief executive in that building, right? Which being the principal. Our, our gap that we're addressing with this task force is that it's, we, we do this in fits and starts. We do not have a systematized, consistent way of talking about how to evaluate teachers, but even more important, how to support teachers in really upping their skills and increasing their leverage in every classroom for every student. And so really, that's really the takeaway for this task force is to look at first, where's the strengths? Second, then develop and systematize and then push out, um, resources, toolkits if you will, that every principal will use that are consistent to what we know works in the district and, and across the nation. So really, when we say moving the dial on high leverage instructional practices, it is that becoming consistent in our approach, consistent in our language, consistent in our conversation, um, down to how many times and the amount of time between an observation and a feedback loop, right? These things are absolutely critical. So where we're at with this is initial, an initial data dig. Um, we, we engage in some empathy building, a cri- a critical piece of the, uh, design thinking, design framework. And so started off by interviewing twelve principals, these are some of our highest, highest performing principals. And really looking at, um, how can we, uh, you know, how, how, how could we avoid it being, um, I'm gonna say a cultural personality, that's not the right term. I don't wanna use that. But how can we avoid it being a, a system that's dependent on a really, really high, you know, high, uh, type A leader? How can we system proof our approaches? So that a very, a very reserved leader and a very go, go after it leader can use the same system with the same results? And so that's what really gave us our twelve principals to get their thoughts and observations on the process. I'll share a little bit of that data, it's driving some of the next, next phases. Currently, we're looking at quantitative and qualitative understanding of those characteristics and looking at, okay, principals are saying these things are absolutely critical to an effective time, to an effective, uh, an effective evaluation process. The next phase then will be to talk to teachers in the, in those same buildings and also across the district who are getting a lot of results, who are getting good results from these strategies and from these conversations. Um, so using teacher survey questions that are similar, that we learned from the principals, applying those to, uh, to the instructional level. And then creating a through line then to student outcomes. So when we see principals are saying these things are critical, teachers are saying these things are critical and some of these things overlap and some of them might be slightly different than what the principal is saying. But then looking at how does that actually apply to math and ELA outcomes? Okay? So really applying this model for targeted support throughout the district. If we look at just some of these, whoops, wrong order, forward there. Um, when we look at some of the data that came out of the principals, this is going to inform the toolkit approach. So some key characteristics of ambitious instructional goals that these principals, these twelve principals really talked about. Uh, you can see, um, one of the key ones was utilizing multiple measures over time. We are really doubling down on the ability to be able to do this, not just take snapshots in time, but take a longitudinal look over the course of a student's history, even career at D eleven. Um, that they enable progress monitoring to that same, to that same point. And that they allow for targeted and tailored goal setting, this is absolutely critical. The strategies that these principals are using are very highly focused observation and feedback. There's no ad hoc approach to this at all. They go in with a very targeted and guided, uh, conversation in a pre-conference set, setting. They sit down with their teachers, they know what they're looking for before they get into that room. The teacher knows what is being, what is, what is being assessed and that drives a productive post-conversation. This was, this was hands down the biggest takeaway from these principles. And it was done in very, in different ways, like I said. A very, you know, some, some were very structured and having almost scripted. Some were a little bit more conversational, but both of them were tied to having a very tight structure that the teacher knew about and that the principal was, uh, using. So, uh, feedback was always guided to and tied back to observations. And the structured pre and post-conference, probably the biggest takeaway. This is gonna be the driving factor in the toolkits that are developed. Um, and actually are being used already in small, in, in some locations that we're going to start to leverage in the next phase of this work. And then we're past, re- repetition of key concepts and small sound bites. Um, that are targeted to that pre-conference, that are tied back to the post-conference, but that are actionable in the very next, the very next period.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you say pre-conference, post-conference, so that's the principal and the teacher sitting down saying, I'm going to come in and observe you tomorrow, here's some of what I'm looking for. Then the observation, then the book, is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, and can you describe for the group what the frequency is by state, uh, law, Tanya?
So state law specifies minimums. It says that, uh, every, uh, probationary teacher must have a minimum of two observations. Every non-provocationary teacher must have a minimum of one.
In a year?
In a year. And, uh, uh, principals, those like principals and assistant principals have to have a minimum of one. The language really emphasizes minimums because local control can then say, great, however, we want this many because of the systems that we've designed.
So have we defined that for, as a district, how many we want?
Well, we are seeking to constantly exceed the state minimum.
Yeah.
Much of the generation of this task force was, how do we, how do we move from being compliance minded in teacher evaluation? If you go to the previous task force, how do we over-resource the classroom to ensure that they're getting the things that they need? And then, because the state requires an evaluation process, how do we use the evaluation process to then close that loop? To say that we're getting what it is that we're investing for. And so I, you know, um, David commented on the bookended nature of this. What we haven't done is created a rubric yet that says, risk management, you fall into this category, it's four and you get three and you get two. We're happy that we're exceeding the state minimum and we have always met or exceeded that minimum. But I think as David alluded to, the clarity and or the specificity or frequency of that observation and feedback is being felt as additive to the end result, which is good. That's the really strong takeaway, that the more specific the, um, the evaluator is, which ninety-nine percent of the time is, is, is the principal, then the better is that conversation to get to that highest quality instruction.
I think just as an example of this, um, the pre-conference is a recommendation, it's kind of a best practice, but it's not a requirement. Uh, straight out of this data, that was the biggest feature. It was the largest, most impactful feature that our most effective principals identify. And so just right out of the gate, we can say, okay, that has to be built in to the toolkit that we're moving forward with. And everyone is committed to how this is happening. Do you need, do you need it very spelled out? Like, this is the way, this is the way some of our, you know, some of our principals are doing it. We create this toolkit that's very spelled out and then it becomes adapted to that principal's style? Sure, but you are doing this in this way with these types of, with these, that's the goal.
And again, uh, uh, you know, wanting our principals to be informed of what our best practice is, gives them the best chance to step into these roles and- to step into these roles and ensure that they're getting the supports that they need into their classrooms and that, again, that full wraparound. Ask that this, the, the system is built in such a way that it just becomes evaluative of a different position over and over again. We're evaluating whether or not the principal evaluates the teacher correctly. Instead of, we're educating our principals on what we're hearing and seeing by data, when David gets to the next slide, of what's actually working. The state says, this is what you have to do. Okay, well, we did all that, but a third of our students are achieving. So, we did all that. We're in complete compliance and have exceeded that. A plus from the state on what we're doing on random. However, that's not turning into what's different of what actually needs to happen in the classroom. And so, this task force has been instrumental in really trying to bring those two worlds together.
This, uh, quick question. This is a little outside the scope of the task force, so, you know, I don't know if you're the right person to ask this. When principals evaluate teachers, are those classroom observations scheduled in advance or is that dependent on the principal or how does that work?
So, uh, no, they do not have to be scheduled in advance under our master agreement. That is typically through the practice. Typically, I would tell you our principals do schedule with them, uh, and we do have a caveat that allows for a teacher to request a sp- a specific time for observation. So, that's sort of another one of the themes around what do our structures look like? I mean, where we need some more specific definition and process is so that, really, what we hear from teachers is how they're experiencing it isn't quite consistent across all of our buildings.
Yeah, that's the big takeaway of that. So, the ne- the next phase then of this work is.
I think Director Jurgensen.
Are you going to the next, um, dashboard?
No, let Director Jurgensen.
Yeah, back to Jurgensen.
Before you do that, with those twelve principals, I would assume that you have data from them that they are not doing the bare minimum as far as their coaching and feedback cycle is going.
Correct.
What, what, did you get a pulse on what that average amount of observations was in those buildings? If the bare minimum is one for not probationary, two for probationary, what are, what are those twelve principals doing?
So, a lot of our buildings where you see high leverage and data coming out, where you see a huge increase in our student academic outcomes, those teachers are experiencing, I didn't give you ranges, like we have some
Yeah.
schools where a probationary teacher gets at least five visits into their classroom through a formal process. We have an elementary this year that is just killing it, um, and those teachers have had close to six or seven. So, it really is dependent upon where they are in, I guess, I don't wanna say buying in, but believing in the value of that research tells us that this practice will get student academic outcome improvement. And so, we don't have a consistent practice across the district, but where we see data growing, we know that it happens more often and it is above our minimums.
Yeah, so, to, sorry, so to that point, um, you know, looking at the, the benefit of that, I remember teaching in, in D two, as a probationary teacher, I had eight observations. And then as a, as a non-provocationary teacher, I still had five. Um, and some of those were scheduled, some of those were impromptu. And they weren't long, you know, they were ten, fifteen minutes where they just came in and, you know, you, your principal knew you, your evaluator knew you, you were, I'm working on differentiation. Okay, great. What's your toughest period? Fourth period this year, right? Like, you just knew, um, those sixth graders in fourth period were, you know, not, they were challenging. Um, and then the, the principal knew that. And so, I think, I, I mean, you ask the general public, you know, if your boss came in and evaluated you one time in the entire year and that was good enough, I mean, how do, how do you trust the system to be efficient when that's the bare minimum? And so, I think, you know, in order for us to be better and, and, and I've said this for a couple of times now, to work on the, you know, everybody's working hard, but how do we work on the right hard? It has to be these shorter cycles of, of feedback. Um, I've talked to numerous teachers who go, I just don't have a relationship with my evaluator because of the very point of, we're in here one or two times in an entire school year. And then we have people emailing the board about, well, these P Ds are not differentiated enough. Well, probably because your evaluator's only in there one or two times a year. He doesn't know what you actually need to be working on. Doesn't know what P D to bring into the building. So, to those points, and sitting on the, on the personnel advisory committee, um, you know, I, we had spoke just last week about the benefits of this, about some pilot programs um, that have been, been, had have had more of these coaching cycles. And the results take a couple of years to get there, um, but the, the data that they're having now that you're gonna show here, I'm, I'm assuming next, I mean, just for me, it created a huge sense of urgency for us to have that be widespread across the district. Um, and then, and the dividends would be right away. You know, you have a, you, you, you're knowing your teachers more as an evaluator. You're knowing what P D to bring in for your building. You're strengthening the, the evaluation process for the teachers to know what they're getting and, and how they're, you know, rated efficient or highly efficient or effective, whatever, whatever they're at and what they're working on. I mean, there's just numerous benefits for us to get this going sooner than later.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
Well, I think included in that conversation, first I wanna ask that, you can't have a pre, you can't have a, in my view, you can't have a, a scheduled, uh, about, uh, observation if you don't have a pre and post. I mean, what's the point? But again, I thought we heard earlier in, um, talking about how we were going to support teachers that we would have, we used to call them walkthroughs, but I think the term was.
Learning walks.
Learning walks is now what it's called for. And to me, and evaluate, uh, if I'm gonna come in to observe, I wanna be in that room for forty-five minutes. I wanna see the kids transition from whatever they were doing into the lesson that the teacher's gonna teach. And I wanna see the, the exit, uh, whether it's an exit ticket, whether it is a, a wraparound to see, just do a check to see who got it, who didn't, and then a transition into the next topic, into the session. And transitioning can be a big, a big deal, a big saver. So, the question becomes, um, what about the walkthroughs? Are they valued? Uh, sometimes people get to a point where feeling that they're being always observed and it's gonna be critical. It's gonna be, cause you have, there's a format. The format is, this is what you did, this is what you did well, and here's an area for you to grow. And, um, teachers who have been in the profession for a long time and maybe have, um, this, the scores to, to show that their kids do really well have a different, in my opinion, have a different attitude about teachers coming in to support. Are you really coming in to support? Are you really coming in to find something that's not right in my classroom? So, I think that that should be part of the conversation as well when you pull the people together. And when you, and conversations with the principal here and there, talking about, um, significant or impactful P D, there was a hesitation for the couple that I talked to, um, should they suggest maybe we should be doing, or there's a great conference coming up and I, you know, this might be of interest to you, and your reaction is, oh, does that mean I'm not teaching this well? And it, I think the culture piece needs to change a bit. And we've all been in this for a while and changing that culture is really tough.
Yeah, what, what I love about this conversation is, is the five Es really gives you that, 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 that feedback. Cause it's very difficult to figure out, did you, were you in too much? Were you not in enough? Was the session, did it feel too evaluative or were you actually trying to give constructive, uh, feedback into that space? The way that our staff are able to inform that cultural feeling in five Es, I think really shows up. We've seen a very clear, um, uh, evolution of going from red to orange to yellow to light green, just between that yellow and light green, that next year, the data pops. It is, there, there are no quick solutions. I mean, everybody knows there isn't a quick solution. We're, we're in the, this arc of change of we put systems and structures in place, there are some systems and structures here. That next phase is adult, uh, investing in adult capacity, ensuring that every adult in the system has a training plan and has the opportunity to be the best or better at what they were hired to do, to then get to students. If you just try and go straight to students without a system and without adults that can handle that capacity over the long run, you just have to do it again next year. You go right back to the place, cause a new crop of students shows up. So, this work and the way that we, I don't wanna say measure, just the way that we view schools through the One Plan Symposium and the multi, multiple data points that come back, give us that full picture of entrusting that our school leaders can create an instructional culture of improvement. That's, that's the goal. That is the goal. It's always gonna be, you know, when you get, there's gonna be outliers. People, some people feel as if a learning walk is not helpful. They don't want people in their classroom. Some people are honored to have people in their classroom. We leave that for the principals to be able to manage to know where it is that they need to be and when they need to be there. I think the great part of this is our principals and assistant principals are very active in the space of trying to ensure that our students are realizing their academic dream through the access to the highest of quality instruction by investing in our classrooms. That's where we started tonight on the budget. That's where we're showing that the task forces are and it's an exciting time to be in D eleven. David, do you wanna cover this real quickly?
Yeah. Um, if I can just say, a lot of, a lot of what you brought up, Director Bank, is, are, inform the follow-up questions for teachers on how, how they develop that and how they feel that's being developed in their building and around there, so. So, this is just a quick example of ways that we are starting to look at data to provide really specific, uh, specific and honed in supports. So, it's a bit of an overwhelming graph, I, I, I concede. So, what you're looking at is basically up the Y axis, there the score is a star, uh, star's, uh, mathematics scale score. The green line across, that's our meet succeeds, uh, level for, for the scale score. So, that's a performing at grade level. Across the X axis is the assessment that we give. So, this is a graph, a chart of showing a student's, a group of students' entire star portfolio of scores. So, at the far left, it starts at beginning of year last year, and at the far right, it ends middle of year this year, the results that we just talked about. This goes to a huge, uh, observation from our principals to say, we don't just want point in time data, we need longitudinal trends to understand where students are coming, coming to and what we can really push them with. So, each line is an individual student. You'll see that the vertical blue lines, basically, this is a tutoring program. This is data out of a tutoring program that we've been using just by point of, point of example, it's a, it's a case study of sorts. So, each student in, uh, this is a cohort of students within that tutoring. And so, when we look at the larger chunk between the two blue lines, that would be last year, pre-treatment, pre-strategy. And then the smaller chunk between the two line, two lines to the right are, uh, during the treatment. So, this is this year up to middle of year. So, what we can see is that we, this gives us a clear picture of what each of these students are coming in with. And we really wanna, uh, Director K, I wanna reiterate like your point with, when you were talking to Dr. Comfort about the delta matters, right? The rate of change in this case is what we're really looking for. So, we're looking for the slope change. And so, you can see that students are coming in with a variety of slopes, right? They're coming in, some of them on an upward trajectory, some of them having a summer melt and then bouncing, some of them coming in different ways. The line of best fit being the black line down the middle. And what we can see then is we can really start to differentiate, when was this treatment started and what was the effect? So, down at the bottom, you see upward slopes after tutoring began. You can see that a fair chunk of this cohort of students we can see are demonstrating an upward slope with this, with this tutoring, uh, strategy. Does this require deeper, um, deeper analysis? Absolutely. We'd wanna compare it to a light group. We can look at other pieces, we can, we can look at how much time were they in the tutoring? This is simply one first check. But I wanted to show it to, we wanted to show it to you because this is the level of depth and, and insight that we can look at. A student that is coming in, if you look at that bottom orange line, kinda the U shape from last year and then the student coming in, we can see that that inflection point, there, there is an inflection point at the, at the point of tutoring. That's something to look into. And we're not just tied to, is everyone meeting? That's certainly the goal we wanna get to. That's certainly, that's certainly our objective. But if we have a steep positive slope and it's still not meeting, we know that we need, we can continue to push this, push this strategy and we will get that student up above meets. The second piece, and I'll leave it here, is that we don't hide behind our growth, our growth percentile. As you know, we struggle with lots of great growth and then no, or very lit, very few students, uh, meeting grade level expectations. We have to flip that script. By looking at scale score, we're looking purely at performance level, but we're taking into account the entire scope of that student's, student's career. So, this is, this is called growth curve modeling in, uh, in geek speak, but it really gives us some powerful tools to look at rates of change across an entire scope of assessments. And the, and the other piece is that we can do this with any repeated measure. So, I use star, that's the easiest one to get to. We could do this with a panorama score. So, if we're looking at an intervention or a strategy that we want students self-delonging to be impacted, we can take a look at panorama, put that across the X axis. So, it's, it's an exciting way to look at this that we can really target in supports.
I think Director.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, so takeaway from this slide is, this is the kind of thing your office is providing to help principals? Or is the takeaway, this is some data we should, we should be thinking about for how math interventions have undergone, more the former, okay?
No, more the former.
The former, correct. So, the former was, um, last year, we talked a lot about movement at school level. This year, we have the data to start looking at movement at classroom level. So, connected to the teacher evaluation, we want to be able to see what's working from a data perspective, backwards map it against the mandatory nature of the evaluation process and find the intersection of those best practices. We're not, we're not, we're not seeking a forced bell curve of evaluations. We're trying to see that in the world of evaluations, where what was our percentage of effective and highly effective last year, Tanya?
In the nineties.
In the ninety percents, what are the best practices that existed in those schools where we have this type of data that says that maybe that second blue line is the inflection point of a critical observation and feedback session with, with a particular teacher? And so, the data is informing the investigation of the best practice for us then to say, these are tools and resources for people to consider. And again, that, what we're trying to avoid is principal does a really good job, principal moves, promotes, retires, then school goes down. Because everything is dependent singularly on the strength of the principal in the building. Now, as new principal comes in, after that first principal has reached some level of achievements associated with growth, how do we use the data to inform that next leader into, these are the practices that have worked here and here's how we think that it can be, it be building? So, what I really appreciate the work from Ed Insights, it's using data to no longer just explain what happened. We're actually now almost present time with the data. And then I think you'll see from the next task force, how Ed Insights is seeking to almost be prescriptive or predictive of what we think the data's gonna tell us. Cause then it allows us, remember, there's never enough resources to solve the problems that we're talking about. Every teacher needs whatever that teacher says they need whenever they need it. And as soon as everybody calls nine one one to the board president or the superintendent or the principal to get that, we're out. There's not enough in the system. So, how do you know where to put the resources and when to put them? Mitigating that risk based upon what the data tells us gives us the best chance to ensure that it, it, there's no irony lost on me that we talk about all the time, a third of our kids are performing at grade level. The random slide pulled by David out of here says, looks like about a third of those lines are above the green line. There it is again, another data point. How do you get that resource alignment to ensure that the strategies that you're using, back to the budget conversation, are going to realize the greatest gain for students?
So, Dr. Nelson, last question so we can keep moving on.
So, I am a little confused. Can you clarify for me, along the bottom, it says, like in that narrow blue lines, it says end of year twenty-three to beginning of year twenty-three, are those? I don't understand.
It's, uh, it's a formatting issue where the.
Yeah, I think it's a formatting issue.
M O Y twenty-two thirty should be by the five point O across the X axis there.
Oh, yeah, that shift.
Say it again, it should be one.
The, the M O Y twenty-three should be at the very bottom right of the X axis by five point O.
Five point O.
Okay.
And those should just shift down a little bit. It's just a formatting error when it came over to the slide.
I see. Okay, okay. And then, so, kind of following up on the question Dr. Carey had, you're saying that that narrow band tells us that the teacher received positive feedback or helpful feedback from the.
No, wait, this is a tutoring data slide that we're using as an example.
That's right.
Yeah, this is a case study.
Okay.
That of the type of data that we could use for that question. I just used, I'm just using tutoring data that I have.
I see. So, you could, you could instead track when the principal went in and gave mentoring to a teacher and do this exact same thing?
Correct. Correct. That is another question that we can apply to growth.
Okay. Very, thank you.
Real, real quick, yeah, I think to your point, we could say, we could track MGP of each kid
Yep.
in Ms. Nelson's second grade classroom. And we can go, wow, she's got, all of her kids are on an upward trajectory. She's doing something great. The principal identifies it. The district identifies, okay, we want her to come in and teach differentiation PD to our other teachers or, or whatever. Or we could see, well, Ms. Nelson's class, you know, they were doing this in first grade. Then they got to Ms. Nelson's class and now they're going like this through the year. And then they got to Dr. Carey's class the next year in third grade and they went back up. Okay, we need to work with Ms. Nelson. So that's, I think, the data that we could be using here. Um, I'd love to see that used by the principals and then, um, maybe incorporating that even into their evaluations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in a way where they go, here's where, here's where I'm directly impacting students. So I'll go, I'll digress.
Moving on to the last task force, you have some quick-
I have one more. Um, yeah, go back to that slide for me.
Okay.
So one of the things I want to highlight, um, is that you're using the STAR assessment. So the tutoring that's being provided to these kids, cause they're all going into the, uh, on an upward trajectory. It means that the tutoring is aligned to what we're expecting our kids to be able to know and demonstrate. And that's an important piece that we should all understand and highlight. We're not changing, uh, assessment scales or ranges. We are holding our kids and ourselves accountable for moving our kids forward on the, on the assessments that we use to make decisions at the board level. And I think that's an important piece. Thank you.
Great summary. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, last, uh, but not least, and not really out of order, but the data dashboard work. Um, and I'll let David cover this again. Tanya, thank you so much for joining us at the table. Um, I hope that you feel as empowered as we feel informed by you on that, on that task force. It's, it's been great to see that.
Very exciting.
Good. Um, this data work is really the, the structure behind that slide that you just saw. And really Ed Insights, um, has really elevated that game of how it is that they're taking a look at data uh, to inform the very, um, uh, the very decisions that we make recommendations to the board for. David?
Before leaving the evaluation, I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Kaiser for being on our task force as well. Great, great insights and it's great to have him. So the dashboard work is really us looking at creating very specific and very customized data reporting approaches. And I wanna hone in on a term called data as a service. So this is the industry standard out across all big data operations now. And that is, instead of expecting the end user to go and approach a dashboard and learn for themselves, it is that things get pushed to them. Think about your Netflix, uh, your Netflix next watched, that's data as a service. All this data is being crunched, high-level algorithms in the background that you don't see any of. It gives you your next, your next series that you should probably be watching. And often it's right and sometimes it's not. But that is data as a service and it gets pushed to you. And that is, that is the direction that we are, we are moving, actively moving, uh, right now within our data dashboard work. What we've struggled with is having dashboards in multiple sites, dashboards that are a bit static and a bit, uh, you know, kinda just, just sitting there waiting to be looked at. And we have many busy people across the district. We wanna change that.
And time, and time. Right? Cause it takes time for somebody to input that data.
Absolutely.
And so you have heard feedback and we have heard feedback, that that time is precious. And so we're trying to build a system that again, if you take an outside parallel, we used to put inked ledger items in our, in our, uh, in our checkbook. And now we magically have data either pushed to us or we can pull however we want to. We're not there yet. We're not there yet. This is a first start that we have to commit to, that David's team and central office has to commit to, that makes this not obtrusive at the classroom level. We cannot push this down and make this the classroom's newest thing that they have to handle. Right? We, we know that, but in that transition, we have to get to a space where we're creating and we're learning from that process.
Delivered to you in the ways that make sense. So we started off with Eureka Math. So we, we've developed and designed, I'll show you a picture of that, of, uh, how to monitor and watch, and, and watch and really provide supports for our Eureka Math, uh, module, into module assessments. That's what we started sandboxing. We now have, uh, dashboards for both Eureka, STAR, Dibbles and are, uh, we're continuing to work to clean all of those up and make sure our data feeds are going in well. Um, the current steps is that we wanna integrate all of these through a service, um, called, I won't get into the details, but Connected Intelligence. It allows all of our data to be, to be housed in one place. And then we can pull it out real time in a way that, that's critical to that push notion, right? It doesn't have to go through this system and then this system and then this system, each transition being an opportunity for error. It goes through, resides in one spot and it gets pushed out to the user in a way that makes sense. It's really, it's a really, um, I would say we are at the front end of how educational data can be used. We're working with a Power School partner, uh, to do this and, uh, it's, it's really been good.
That's cool.
Uh, and then the next steps is just to reimagine what dashboards look like, have a consistent format. It's all in one menu. I can go look at my STAR, STAR results and compare those to my Eureka results. I could even overlay them into the somewhat similar to a graph that I showed you before. I can overlay those and see what are the correlations and what are, what are the relationships. Um, and so when we, when we do this, this is all data as a service being pushed out to the end users. So what does this actually look like? Uh, this is the Eureka dashboard. So this is a very familiar format to us, right? This is what unified insights look like. But what we're gaining from this is it's all in-house. We're saving, we're saving money first of all to do it. But we can customize it and we, we have literally, uh, Dr. Greg X is leading this work. He has made significant changes to a dashboard based on customer feedback, customer being principals primarily for us at the moment. Made that change within a couple of minutes. And it didn't cost us two thousand dollars and we didn't have to put in a work order for three weeks later. All right? So this is what it looks like. Some of the information you can see, you can see percent passing across the different grade bands. We are using this to monitor where our school's at with their end of module assessments, right? What we watch, we work on and we change. That's a key piece. And so we can see that where we, where we were really strong in module two, you know, it kinda tapers off in module three. That's the bottom right-hand graphic. Support and training, right, to bolster that number up is always the first, the first priority. We can, we can sort this by standard and we can see, uh, you can see on the far left, all the different sorting mechanisms by gender, by subgroup, uh, school, module, all these different pieces. Um, and so it is our almost full-time, twenty-four hour update, uh, every morning. It's, it's updated. We are making sure that that's working and it utilizes curriculum-based measures. So very, very specific to our actual work tied to the, each school's U I P, tied to the district U I P, but then also always pushed out to the user. So a principal, for example, could get on an app that they, uh, for module four, uh, there's your fifty, fifty-eight percent completion for module four. And module four, by the end of next week, we move on to module five. That's really critical information for that principal to have, be able to follow up on. We can, we are also developing ways of looking down to the student level. Now this data matters. Well, it matters, but it's not as usable if we can't get to that very, very, down to a student level. And so this is allowing us to, to rack side by side, a student's performance on module one, module two, module three per student. And so a team can look at, okay, look, oh, we started out pretty strong, nearly proficient, and then we had a drop-off. It gives a really quick comparison across this. That's what the, that's the notion around this, uh, uh, this visualization is.
Could you tell me what an adjusted score is on this?
I'm sorry?
Could you tell me what an adjusted score? So if we just look at the top line, twenty-seven point five, am I on the right, same one you have up there? And you look across and you get to the adjusted score. So I, I see the possible points. I see the ones that, the, um, points that have been achieved. I see the raw score. What's an adjusted score? The same as a raw score?
I will need to chase that down for you.
Okay.
That comes out of Eureka, so I can ask Paul. Remember that question coming up and I, off the top of my head, I don't have that answer.
Cause to me, points achieved mean that's how many they have right. Um, and then, and they were weighted, uh, the questions were weighted or the problems were weighted. And so then you get to a raw score and that's the number that they actually got right.
Yeah.
But I don't know what the adjusted score is.
I will, uh, I'll get that back.
Sure.
I'll find out and get that back.
Thank you.
So that is the idea behind the, uh, data dashboard. And so on the far, far left will be a list of all the dashboards that a user can use. So it's all in one place, all in one format. The drill-down process is exactly the same and, and it should be a consistent, a consistent user experience.
The, the other thing that I wanna acknowledge, uh, for the board and, and thank Tamara's not here and, and Liz had to leave, but our, um, our principal management and C A O team are involved with our U V A relationship, the University of Virginia. And they just came back and, and that cohort experience was on data-driven instruction. And so now anybody who's been to that type of training can get very excited about that experience. But then if you come back to a system that doesn't have the data for you to inform that driven instruction, then you're left flat. And so although by no means perfected and with great iteration yet to come, we're finding a way that we can sequence, not just what we say that we wanna do, but how it is that we do it. And that's a lot about where we started the first slide today on budget. You know, equity and, and, and strategy is, are connected to where you put your dollars and your resources. And so having people go out and be trained in data-driven instruction and then come back to a system where those very principals can get this information allows them to realize the training that you have got, instead of them having to go invent it, uh, themselves as a one-off where we have fifty different solutions. Um, and so I do appreciate the co-horted, uh, uh, the coherent and aligned and coordinated nature of those strategies.
Yeah, I did attend that. I'm part of that group, so, so I can take those, those messages straight back into our boards.
I forgot that you were there, David. Thank you for acknowledging that as well.
Very vision, I mean, that was, that was Tamara's, uh, Tamara's vision to bring that all together, so.
Thank you. Any other feedback or questions for David at this time?
Very exciting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you getting ready to close? Before you close, I have an announcement.
Okay.
I wanted to announce to the board that today, uh, Sarah Scott was named the Central Area Superintendent. We have dropped the interim status. She went through a rigorous and competitive, um, and transparent interview process. And today, those final interviews were conducted and we have made her verbal offer of which she has accepted. We could not be more excited than to have Sarah in that permanent role.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Strap up for like eight at nine o'clock and ten o'clock, like four meetings or something. Well, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Is that it?
It's a-
Super technical. Okay, with that, we are officially adjourned at six oh seven P M. And we will, um, enter into special meeting in about three, four minutes. We'll transition there and enter into special meeting. And exit the session. Thank you.
So sorry, we're gonna resume here. Yeah. And the dais?
We have to go.
Yes.
Yeah, go to the dais.
To go to the dais first and then-